So this is just a search for information with you. Actually written by the Gunnison County. And he shared it with me, tell me I can share with you all, so. That's alright.
Right on.
So why do we talk about it? The number one asset of any government is its roads and associated infrastructure. There's costs of keep expansion, wide effects of road. Brains, trains, buses, and automobiles, some of these are sexy to policymakers. Our built environment is based on all of these uses, so. Everything that we do, they use, so. The attraction of rural Colorado is more and more and more, so. Everybody gets to visit our roads. Rising costs of construction advantages, safety and regulations. Containing, constrained funds, excuse me. History in Colorado and funding sources. Expected outcomes, public expects to be living and back to the future too. But they're stuck with today. Solutions are not one size good all, but are sold that way. Taking the math, staff, equipment, fuel, and 10% overhead, we don't really add 10% to our stuff, but since that's it. Equipment for draining a gravel road, takes a motor grader, roller. Their motor graders actually have rollers on them, so that's one piece of equipment for them, that's two pieces of equipment for us. Water truck and staff. Timeline is two to four miles a day with one grader, three to five miles a day. Of pulling ditch if you pull ditches the day before.
What's pulling ditch mean?
So it means going down a gravel road and cleaning out the ditches. The ditches to run, pull that back out on the road, we have to haul it off. Because it's got a lot of weeds and trash in it, we do that all the day before we start grading the road. Lake County has 200 lay miles of county gravel roads. And then mobilization. Cost per day is equivalent at about fifteen hundred dollars, staff about nine hundred and sixty-eight. Total twenty-five hundred dollars a day, or six hundred and twenty-two dollars per lay mile.
Michael, why is the equipment cost fifteen hundred bucks a day?
Because they actually lease it, we actually keep track of it that way. So we have a cost for every hour that we use a piece of equipment. So that we can track that cost, because if we buy, need to go buy that piece of equipment, that's what it's gonna cost. Should be actually charging ourselves that and putting it away, but we don't.
So like the lease is a set rate, or is the, are you, am I hearing this right? Does the lease change depending on how much the hour meter goes up on the machine?
So on our equipment, we own it all.
Okay.
So we would actually be renting it to ourselves.
Oh, got you, okay.
We tie that cost in what it would cost to rent that piece of equipment.
Fair enough.
And keep that track, keep track of that cause.
It's like an airization.
It's not really a hard cost?
Yeah, basically that's what it cost us in the end of having to replace that machine. And you'll see, coming up, I have some prices of a machine reteating here, so.
But you keep track of that, like every?
Yeah, every time that we use it, or every time we go out plowing, still as a piece of equipment. We have a cost for that piece of equipment. I know Picken County and Gunnison County, their fleet department's actually own the equipment. All of the equipment and every department that uses it basically leases it from the fleet department.
Oh, that's smart.
That way it goes back out of like our budget into their budget to replace that piece of equipment.
How old are, how old's that grader that we saw out at the fire station that one day? Pretty old.
The 2003.
2003?
Yeah, so and that's, you know, now twenty-two years old. It's got, that one's got about nineteen thousand hours on it, so it's at the end of its life. The deal's only got it's about three years old, and it has about a thousand hours on it. Big difference. We've got one in between there that's got about eight thousand hours on it.
I'll wait till you get to the, we got another slide coming up for that.
Yeah. So, graveling road, obviously taking grader, roller, motor, dump trucks, belly dumps. We do have two belly dumps, as long as we have Class A CDL operators to operate them, water trucks and staff. Timeline, it all depends on the haul distance. To our pit, we make our own road base in Lake County, where other counties don't, they have to go to wherever they go to buy it at. So we have a pit right by the airport, so. So it's just a travel time, like back to Twin Lakes is about forty-five minutes with a truck, or a loaded truck to get back there. But east of Truckton Hall, about sixty-five feet worth of road. Hundred-five feet for a belly dump and that's three inches of gravel, excuse me. So cost per day for that is about twenty-four grand. And that's about a half a mile of road.
You're not adding three inches of gravel?
We don't, we usually add like two inches, if it's already got a good gravel base, we're just adding to it to replace some of the gravel. If it has no gravel on it, yes, we do put that much on there.
Gravel or road base?
Road base. We don't, we use just road base on our roads, so.
And like the verbiage, graveling a road, this is paving, right? So we're just talking about just our dirt roads?
This is just dirt roads, graveling it, putting material on the gravel road.
I didn't know we had to roll those, I thought they just kinda get scraped and you dump a box of rocks on them.
And hack them down.
Okay.
So magloriding a road, we do that too. Several of our dirt roads every year, just because they get really dusty, people complain about the dust, but it also breaks down our road base if we don't do that. This just binds everything together and makes it a pretty good road for quite a while. It gets really slimy when it gets rain on it though.
It's held clean off the car, you catch it right after they put that on the dirt roads, it's a mess.
So it does take a roller, the grader with the roller. Usually we contract that out, so. We're set with how much we can get with what's in our budget, and our budget this year is forty grand. So that's all the material that we can buy. Flaggers, water truck staff. Eighty-eight hundred gallons of mag, which is assault brine. Is what they carry on the tanker. It's usually a day and a half of prep. And one to two hours of application on three miles of road. It takes us a little bit longer because we only do like a mile section and then have to go someplace else in the roads. I think this year. Trailer park from ninety, from Highway ninety-one down to the tunnel is on the list. County Road forty-eight, which goes out below the dam, it's a straight right out below the dam. County Road eleven A, which goes out to the pits once it leaves the asphalt. And County Road seven, that goes up to the trap hub. And all the way to the canyon is where we usually go to. Cost is eighteen thousand a day, that's for three thousand, three miles of road. And it depends on how much we need, but they'll put like a quarter of a gallon per square yard. So that's how the truck figures it out, it's mixed with water too. Like I said, this is a pretty good quality road, it gets really hard when it gets dry. It's hydro. Philly, so it sucks in the water. We have hypophobic stuff too, so. You could add additional days of blading at twenty-five hundred dollars. It just gets smooth and if we have to go back and blade it afterwards. That has saved us a lot of blade time. Like County Road ten, at twenty-four, they get a lot of traffic in the summertime. We just don't have to keep going back every week and re-blading it because it gets washed further. Pod hole patching, everybody loves this. It takes truck, a compactor, flaggers, and staff. Each pot hole area is obviously the size. Timeline, it takes the time it takes to travel there and traffic control greatly affect the cost. About sixty-five hundred dollars a day, and that's for a ton of coal mix, so. We don't store it to coal mix in the wintertime except for in bags, so like right now, we're using all of our bag supply to patch. Everything that's opening up right now because it got warm. But we are out of pot hole patching now. Crack sealing, we don't do this a whole lot, but we will start because all of our new asphalt, as it starts cracking, we'll get it filled. Takes a broom, that's. Like not a mechanical broom, not just a sweep broom. Crack sealer, lower, flaggers and staff. And obviously the need is determined by how good the crew is. Usually takes about seven to eight people, we've gone down to at least sometimes three people, which is not really that efficient. But that's what we have, so. Crack seal costs about a dollar thirty per pound. When we're out crack sealing, we do average about twenty thousand pounds per year, about ten miles of roadway.
Do you mean ten miles of crack sealing? Or do you mean ten?
The actual, the distance, covering.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That's about seventy-two hundred dollars a day for a half pallet. Painting lines, need a broom, contractor and staff. Need staff to help them control traffic. That is contracted out. We do about twenty grand, I think I put twenty-five in this year, just to get a little bit more, and they keep raising their prices, so I brought it up a little bit. Just to make sure we get the same amount. But we do, like Magloriding, we do different sections every year. So if I see something that's getting center lined, we usually only do center lines because actually two white lines get really expensive. So we just do the center line and usually it's a double yellow, people really don't need, there's no place that people really need to pass on the county road. And a lot of corners and stuff on them are not feasible. But I try to keep it, you know, so we do about the same amount of mileage every year, I think last year we did about eighteen miles. And that was County Road ninety-nine, County Road ten, County Road twenty-four, in the south, and anything that we paved in the last year or two. Make sure it's all that first line on it. Crack chip sealing. This is also contracted out at least, we have done that the last couple of years, contracting it out, they've handled everything, but if we do it in-house. We still need an oil distributor, a chipper, dump trucks, rollers, broom. A paint truck afterwards if we can get it done. Flaggers and staff. We can chip seal about a mile and a half a day. And that's both lanes. And like I said, this work is contracted out for us usually. Turn everything over to them except for we help them with traffic control and stuff. Cost, it usually takes twenty staff members, I don't have that. That's why it's contracted out. About six gallons, six thousand gallons of oil per mile and a half, it's about twenty-three thousand dollars. Two hundred and thirty cubic yards of rock, so it's just chip rock that goes on top of that, it's about six grand. And forty-four grand a day, forty-five grand a day for a chip seal project. And that's about, excuse me, that's about what it cost us last year when we did County Road ten. About a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars to do that for a road.
So how many miles you get out of it a day for forty-four cheese?
About a mile and a half.
About a mile and a half.
Paving, flagging is dependable on how many people, usually four to ten, at least two on either side of us when we're in a straight stretch of road. We have intersections and we gotta deal, making sure that nobody comes out off of one of the intersections. Six to ten dump trucks, we have four of our own. And sometimes the city will let us give us a couple of theirs, or we contracted them out, last year we contracted them out. Timeline depends on project details, haul distance, flagging complexity and shift timelines. Cost of a hundred and sixty-five dollars a ton laid asphalt price, that includes lay down machine and everything, and we rent those, rent those out. Three hundred and thirty-six tons a day is about eighty grand, and that's about what we spent on that last road that we did, was about seventy-eight grand, so.
So a tenth of a mile, I mean that's more than eighty grand, that's just the, eighty is the?
Three hundred and thirty-six tons for that day.
For the asphalt itself. And then we're not talking about machine loss or hours later and anything like that. What is our, do we know what our loss is, or is that coming up?
That does include the rental equipment and everything, because it cost me fifty-eight, eight grand for the oil left.
Oh no, I'm sorry.
Okay.
For the asphalt. Rest was all the equipment, random stuff on top of that.
So that is more than just the gravel, but that's not the total, the total cost of paving for ten to the mile?
Yeah, that's what it costs.
Okay, that is everything.
Snow plowing, fun stuff. We have two dump truck plows with sanders, one has a wing, the other one's just a small blade on the front. We have three loader plows. Road and Bridge doesn't have any pickup plows, but Maintenance does, they plow the parking lots and they have a sander on one of their trucks, on their dump truck. We have two motor, actually three motor graders with wings and everything, one's down south, it doesn't get used that much. But we have two that are on the road all the time in the wintertime and up in the city or in the urban area.
Is that the same grader as you use for the gravel roads or different?
Yeah, so they're used year round. Always use, add weights to them. Actually, I did that the other day, first time I've ever plowed with a grader in twenty years I've been here. I've operated them, but actually possibly wasn't really wrong.
Sold it out in Ludstone the other day, chipping away at all the ice up there.
Trying to get the ice up. They are very handy in the wintertime, in summertime, they do have their piece of equipment that you can't beat what they do.
Yeah.
All routes are staffed and waiting six to eight hours during a typical storm. And they all get plowed, so I really don't have priority road, it's just, as soon as we get there, we get there. We do have priorities like getting the bus to school, when the school busts it out, getting people out of the county, because we know a lot of people work out of the county. So we try to make sure they can get to the highways. Those are our priorities, and then we go into the neighborhoods of the files, so. Equipment purchasing, a new grader was, like I said, theirs has a roller and I'm looking at doing that because they told me that they can do a lot more when they're rolling the road right behind a grader. About four hundred and ninety grand for a new grader. Wheel loader, about three hundred and twenty grand, that's about what we paid for the last one that we got from the landfill and road bridge. Pickup plow, our plow truck, pickup plow truck is about a hundred and twenty grand, I think that's one that we have. At least with Enterprise, I think that's what it cost us. Skid steer's about eighty grand, backhoe's about two hundred and twenty grand. Crack sealer's a hundred and eighty, we don't own one, we usually rent one when we do crack sealing. It's just that way we don't have to maintain it and store it. Class A plow truck, we have actually four of them, excuse me. It's a plow, sander, and all the controls, are about four hundred and eighty grand, and our big one that we just got, that's what it cost us, was about four hundred and eighty. Welder that we use a lot to fix things, that break, eleven grand. Low void tractor, two hundred and twenty-five grand. We have one of those that gets traded out every year. So it's on the same thing as our dump trucks, that we trade them out, get new ones for very minimal cost. Which is awesome because we don't have to do anything but maybe an oil change on them during the year.
Nice.
And they go back and get brand new one. It seems weird to do it that way, but we don't have any costs other than whatever it cost to upgrade from the last one that we had. And we can keep up the ones that we have any time we want, we don't have to train them, train them back. But that's just what the deal that we've worked with. Western Star, TransWest Auto, they approached us with it, the commissioners thought it was great, so. We're still doing that, as long as you guys think it's good and easy. But our motor pool, here we got Explorers, Maverick trucks and Rangers.
Are those numbers accurate to our motor pool?
Yeah, we got those off of the lease price.
Well, I mean, it's a drop in the bucket, but the Maverick is a smaller compact alternative to the midsize Ranger and bigger trucks. Why does the Maverick cost more than a Ranger?
Because people like it, so Ford charges more for it. I tried to figure that out too, because it's just downsized, it's basically on the Explorer body.
Yeah.
But.
It was supposed to be the cheap, cheap alternative, and it's funny that they cost more.
And it's not the, it's not the hybrid version?
No, it's.
So do you offer that, hybrids?
That would, that would explain it, yeah. It's just jumped out at me.
And then the sheriff's town owns. Sixty grand and the lighting package on it, that we have to pay upfront? That's why right now our. Fleet payment is so high. Because the sheriff's town owns are just coming online and all the upfit on them, we have to pay, I think it's fifty percent upfront, and then they put the rest into the lease. All the plow trucks, the plows and stuff that we got, we had to do that too. Staff is always critical in everything, performing everything, training, competence, leadership. Staff is a fixed critical cost. Always advocate for paying, obviously. I can't get people hired, so. Consider input from all angles, I do. Try to get other departments to help out, but I guess I can't do that no more, so. I was told by HR I can't do that, so.
Why is that?
Why?
Because I have to actually hire them into that position, or transfer them into that position, so that work runs complicated or something like that. We've always done that before, but I was told I can't take like recreation kids that are not doing anything in the summertime or need something to do, and put them for.
Can I even like apply to flaggers and stuff?
Um, yeah, because they're, they're doing a different job.
Could we hire them?
You could hire them.
Different, I was gonna say, to have, if they're part-time, but it seemed to me that they could potentially have two part-time assignments in different departments. And you just have to track, make sure they're not working in the time together, so.
That's possible, they told me, because I had somebody trying to keep him working, up working up at the landfill. And he backed one of our trucks into something and they said I can't do that no more, so. Because he technically wasn't insured up there.
And I think part of that though might be the type of work that they're doing. There are certain requirements for it and.
Yeah, and they have to be covered by workers comp.
Yeah, workers comp, and also if they're in terms of operation of certain equipment or vehicles and stuff, if they've done the appropriate trainings and all that kind of stuff. But that's why it would make sense to try to separate them out for specific part-time jobs, to make sure they fall into those categories that you hate. So maybe it's something we can talk with Zoe about how we can structure that to help out with that. So show those for part-time, right, if you love the happy ground.
Fire sign people for me, but yeah, I like, you know, but they're already working for the county, I don't want to keep them working.
Yes.
Yep. Do, is that gonna be followed up with then? Great, thank you.
So what does it all mean, large costs have large opportunities for finding savings, we try to save things every corner that we can turn. These chairs are good, so. There's always assumptions about our work and what we do. I don't sit, we don't sit around the shop, we're out there working on the roads, doing something all the time, so. I keep my guys busy. Landfill or Maintenance, they're always running around, you know, so.
I just, I hope, you know, I don't think anyone in this room thinks you guys are sitting up there drinking coffee and chatting around the water cooler.
Because, yeah, I work before and after hours just to make sure I get stuff done, because during the time when we're open, I don't have time.
Totally.
You know, creating understanding for the constraints. Yeah, we have constraints on everything we do, whether federal government, then hiring people that are not drug, using drugs, whatever. We attested, everybody in public works get tested unrandomly also. Because even if they don't have a CDL, they could be operating a piece of equipment, which, you know, puts them in a safety sensitive position where they could do damage to something. Decisions about contracting and self-performance, you know, we always try to go with the best in each bid, the most compliant bids. But we do have a lot of constraints that we got to follow, state laws that we ought to follow, stuff like that. Questions?
You know, it's all very, large costs have the opportunity for finding savings. I just, I don't, I feel like when I look at the numbers for your department, they're already so bare bones that I don't know if there's anywhere else. It's kind of the, my mind is sort of the opposite of where can we? And this is one of the few things that, you know, to take a step back real quick, that I had in mind before I ever set foot in this building. In the capacity as commissioner, and so many things change when you get to see from the inside how complex everything is. But I still feel like if there's a way we can figure out how to trim something from a different area and move it. To enhance some of our road and bridge capabilities and public works needs, that's still something that's on my radar, that I'd really like to figure out how to do. It's, it's just gotten lost in the mix of all the millions of things that we're trying to learn about in here and get up to speed on, but. That's, you know, moving forward, you know, this is kind of like the basics of, you know, the breakdown of the roads themselves, and. I guess the big question I have is like, how do we, how do we get more into the roads? It's such a slim budget that.
Something, not to cut you off, something interesting in that aspect is. I went looking to see the last time that the county collected a road bridge tax on the middle of, was it nineteen ninety-six, I believe? But I did see nineteen ninety-seven's budget, and right now, pretty much my budget is, for asphalt is the same as it was in nineteen ninety-seven. So it's like, you know, we're not getting as much as we did in nineteen ninety-seven, but we're still at the same place.
Michael, can you go through how, like what you're staffing and what machinery you would need in addition to just like overall increasing your budget for paving materials?
Right down, technically I'm down at least two people, because I had one that just went to Wagner Equipment over the hill. So I'm down one in that curve in the middle of winter time, that's why I was out plowing with the grader, but like I said, I had fun. And I try not to do that because that's what the guys are there to do, but I do cover if I need to. So at least operator wise, I'm down two people, and that's with CDLs. Getting people trained, I've got a couple of people, that one that I'm looking at hiring is a young, younger kid, he just got out of the military. Mechanic type guy, but he wants to be an operator, he knows how to operate equipment. But he doesn't have a CDL, so I'm gonna try to get him a CDL, and I've also got another equipment operator that just got his permit for a CDL. That I want to get through the process of getting his CDL back for him. That way then everybody that works, operator wise, that works for road and bridge has a CDL. There's a couple at the landfill that they need to get CDLs so they can haul material from Denver. I thought I was losing one in April, but he decided to stay another year, so. But. Right now, that's pretty much what I mean, when it comes to working on, out on the road. Say we're paving, it takes three people on the lay down machine itself. Some laborers to help shovel if they need to. Six truck drivers hauling material to that. Like I said, if we have to go to BV, that's a two hour round trip, just to get out. Like I said, if we have to go to BV, that's a two hour round trip, just to get asphalt back to that lay down machine. If we don't have, the trucks timed just right, then the lay down machine, people are just sitting there doing nothing. Waiting for more asphalt to come in, I don't like that. And other than that, that's pretty much, you gotta have a personnel roller rolling behind it. I'd love, love to have two rollers behind it, because one can do the. Breakdown and the other one can do the final rolling on it, as it cools down. Lately, we've only had one roller to do that, so it's gotta do both, both jobs. Yeah, and the head flaggers, depends on how many flaggers I need. And pretty much everybody in road, at public works, landfill, maintenance, they're all flagger certified. Not only so that I can use them on the road, but if we have an emergency and we need them, and I don't have enough people to flag, I can pull them in and do that.
How, how does like, um, the potential, or are, is there any examples of like partnering up with city works to? Tank paving projects?
We have done that before, and like the last time we paved, they did give us one operator, truck driver for a few hours, for a few days. To do that. We have, when I first started here, we helped the city pave roads. The county paved roads, so we helped the city, the city helped us. And that's when we had our hot plant operational. Which I'm working on to get that done again. So that we can make our own asphalt, not have to buy it from ACA and BV, or have to travel to get it.
Since I don't know enough about the subject, would that be something worth asking the city if they wanna? Partner up with us on getting the hot plant going, so we could contribute to city paving projects as well as county, or is it not?
Exactly, you know, I've got a very small amount of material, aggregate material that's already crushed, ready to go. That's one of the reasons that the hot plant shut down, is because. The last bid we got to do, make a bunch of material for us, was about one point two million, and the county didn't have that money at the time.
When was that?
Two thousand eight, I believe was the last time that we paved, out of there. And it would be really nice to have a silo, instead of the seven and a half ton hopper, to have like an eighty ton silo. So if you have to make all the material for the day. Then the trucks could just come as they needed. When we were at. Had the seven, and I'm making it out there with only seven and a half tons in hopper. It was like, if the truck didn't show up, I had to shut the whole plant down, you know, without material in, in the hopper. And it took forever to get everything back up and running. To make the right type of material, and get, make sure the oils are all mixed into it. That's like, if you can keep it running, keep it running.
Something I've always wanted to ask on this subject is, um. Just seems like the state of Colorado. Like other mountain communities in different states, their roads are in way better shape. Roads in Colorado in general are just, as soon as you cross the state line, coming from just about any direction. It's like cruising, and then you're like. Why are our roads so bad in this state in general, like it seems like, are, do we just use an outdated paving? Style, a different technology, is there traditionally just a way that we're doing something wrong compared to Utah, or Nebraska, or?
Most of the companies that worked in Colorado also work in those states. Or some portion of them, like I know in Colorado, Old Castle Mountains, like three different paving companies. Like United. APC Southern, who just, who did our runway, they got bought out after they did that. And I can't remember the other one, or Kiwa, it might be Kiwa, but I'm not sure. But they pretty much have a monopoly in Colorado. So that could have something to do with it, I can't really say for sure, because Colorado, CDOT has its own specs, so they have to meet those specs.
Maybe that's the reason.
And that could be just a different material that we're using, I know we, CDOT uses a super pave. Cause it holds up to the trucks and the weather a lot better, but. And we don't, don't have the funds.
Maybe they use a different, uh. You know, how many inches requirement or something to stretch it further per dollar, I don't know, it just seems like. You know, e- even with other communities with similar weather. Problems, you know, like the freezing, thawing, heating, sun, high altitudes and stuff, that like our roads are just. You know, statewide are just in such worse shape compared to other mountain communities.
I do know in the nineties, I think when they paved a lot of everything in Lake County. That they made asphalt with our road base gravel, which has clay in it, and the oil doesn't bind to that too well, so that's why a lot of it's falling apart now. Their end of life, they don't, you know, have that much. To bind it together, and it's just breaking apart with all the.
That could be another root cause, the clay content of the existing gravel.
That's why we have the Hafnun pit, and we have a pit by the airport, the airport pit has a lot of clay in it, which binds that road base together. The stuff that Hafnun pit is river rock. And when it's crushed, it's just all rock. So that aggregate binds with the oil a lot better.
Michael, I wanted to revisit for a second, talking about your staffing for some of these things too, have you explored with HR actually seasonal employees? Having the category of seasonal employees where you attract and change those during the summer?
Not with the current HR, with previous HRs, and we were told no, they only wanted full-time employers.
I, I recommend we revisit that, and for these type of summer needs and stuff.
That's what we used to do when the kids got out of high, out of school.
Yeah.
They'd come to work for the county, um, I mean, I've got several interns that worked at the county that are in their own businesses. They work for Wagner Equipment.
Yeah, there's certain labor laws that apply to the type of work you do, but in Colorado it allows for a category of seasonal worker. And you have to specify that, develop that, so I'll follow up and see what we can do about maybe getting that status ready for this summer, see if we can. Do it quick enough to get it status for the summer, because to me that makes sense in terms of. And that also might be able to help you attract people that have some experience, um, in doing that work versus co-opting from other departments.
I started as a seasonal person.
There you go. Perfect example.
Now I'm the boss. I did, I worked. Seasonal in the summer, I ran the crusher, and the first learner, one of us here worked seasonal plumbing style. One of the guys quit, so I got hired on.
I know, so I'll combine that too.
Thank you.
Michael. Sort of on the same vein of the staffing situation, um, do you have the, like. Training for the CDLs, um, to get people licensed, is that in your budget, or is that something that is like? In the training budget at HR, or is it not in the budget anywhere?
I got some training funds. But we usually use that to go to, um, classes and stuff to. Gain more knowledge on how to do this stuff, I mean, find out what's new, new and stuff. I don't know what it costs to get a CDL right now, because they keep changing, they keep adding a lot of new regulations, because like all the accidents have been in Denver. But that's all, it also comes down from the federal government that way. Or now they have to have a certain amount of class time before they can go take the test even. I know the Turkey, last Turkey county meeting that we had, we actually trained the city guy, the city street guy, the street superintendent. It cost us like five grand for just that little class. We had to pay, obviously, his room and board while he's at Denver and doing that class for like three weeks.
Are they only down in Denver?
Yeah, there's nothing, I, I did find a place that might come here and train in-house. But they need so, so many people, that it's almost the same as going to Denver again.
How long does it take to get a CDL?
About three weeks.
Three weeks?
And there's also a class that I've been working on with LTAB, Colorado LTAB, which is, well, the LTAB stands for local training. I run through Front Range College. They do, like it's three week classes and training, and people in, into public work stuff. And at the end, if you stay for so long with your employer you're working with, they will help you get that CDL. So, I mean, that's an option too.
Michael, there's some wrapping companies that would need a, offer a CDL.
Different type of CDL.
Other than for the bus?
For the buses, yeah, not for any.
It's passenger.
No, based on, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're very expensive.
Michael, would that be possible for you to get together, uh. Like a cost for how many more CDL drivers you need, and how much it would cost to get them trained?
Yeah, yeah, I could get that figured out.
Because if it's not in your budget, we should be talking about that now, so we're ready for the summer.
Is there a minimum age, do you have to be eighteen?
Um, I think it's sixteen. Um, to operate, I think it's eighteen, but to, you know, be a flagger or something, it's only sixteen, I think.
Do you have to have a regular driver's license already?
Yes.
What about under our worker, what about, what about under our general liability, or our workers comp?
Well, and that's what we have to look at.
Like I had to be, yeah, you have to be a certain age to.
Do certain.
Yeah.
Tasks, and that's one that we have to look at.
Well, that's what I did, and make sure that we're.
Traits and what we could use them for.
Great, yeah, okay.
And then with the flaggers and stuff, they do have to be sort of five and, and flagging or whatever like that, so.
Yeah, and waiting to get them certified, it's like, I've got a class coming up, or I gotta get everybody certified.
Yeah, yeah.
Every two years they gotta be certified, so.
Seems like it'd be valuable.
And that's a CDOT requirement, a two-year, but.
Nice.
For high school kids to. Get their CDL over the summer.
Yeah, I mean, for CDL, they do have to be eighteen.
I mean, there's a lot of kids coming out of, well, there might be, you know, a few kids coming out of high school who aren't sure what, you know. What they're gonna do, or they wanna take a gap year, and, you know, who knows? What, uh. The local youth's needs are as far as like employment, you know, I could just easily imagine being a, a youth in this town, being eighteen, and being like, what am I gonna do? You know, I don't wanna drive over the hill every day, and if there was some kind of drive, be like, hey, like. We got needs, you know, if you don't wanna sit around and play Xbox all summer, then come work for us.
It also seems valuable that if we've got, um. I get that we might not be able to have enough CDL. People who need CDL training in your department, or regionally, if everybody has to go to Denver to get these classes. If we could host it here, and then people from Chafee, or Swatch, or Park, or Eagle. Came here, that would be a huge boon for us all around, because people would be lodging here, we wouldn't have to pay for food and board. Like, I could just see that being really valuable, I know that that would be extra legwork, but maybe even HR would help push that out.
I think it was at CCI when we were down there this last year, I think that there's, that company was there. And they were talking about getting CDL drivers.
That could be like a net gain for us.
I, I do have their card, I do have their information.
Awesome, awesome. Well, and if it's like, if they need like fifteen people and we only have five, I could totally imagine that we could find ten people in the region. Who wouldn't wanna drive all the way to Denver.
Maybe even partner with CMC on that, to offer and have it promoted to their campuses as a, you know, program.
But that, yeah, even the other public works directors in the area, cause then that saves everybody money for room and board and travel. If they don't have to go very far. Especially Chafee County, they wouldn't even have to pay for rooms, they could just commute.
Or Summit County.
Or Summit, or, yeah, like so many of them.
Summit County has two local people working over there.
Nice, yeah, there you go, see?
I keep trying to get them to come over here, but they get paid too much over there, so.
Tale is old, as time.
Oh, really?
So, some solutions that we can bullet point are, uh, look at surrounding county's needs for CDL classes. Check with CMC, and maybe just kind of dig in to see if we can figure out some way to bring, uh, CDL classes here. Talk with HR about restrictive hiring for you, whether we can do part-time summer employees. And check in with the city about maybe exploring the idea of some, uh. Re, rehashing some of those old partnerships that we used to do with them, and maybe if they'd be on board for, you know, some collaborative work, like for the hot plant or something like that.
Maybe not just the city either, but some of the, depending on all the utility work that level sanitation is going to do, and. Other utility work, maybe partnering with them to be able to teak it up for their road repairs.
Um, should I just set something up with Dana to have a chat about that soon, I need this to delta anyway?
That should be, Michael wanna talk to their roads person first.
Yeah, I can do that first.
Okay.
And just see, yeah. But I'm just thinking of making it broad enough to create that volume, and need to keep the hot plant running. Would make sense within it, the city doesn't, I don't know what their plan is for the summer, where they're paving, if they're doing any here.
Yeah, I'm not sure, because they've been contracting their value, they haven't actually been doing it yet.
Okay.
So you'll take lead on that conversation?
Yes.
LTAB's due for a local technical assistance program. And they're talking about. Offering trainings for transportation stuff, and all of, you know, locally, so if possible, maybe we could talk to them about like doing a CDL training.
Yeah, I'd have them come up and do, um, they've done classes here, like. And they're always looking to place them all classes, so. Maybe they can do a CDL, I'm not sure if they actually have a class, or CDL, but I know one of our guys has. Graduated from the road scholar program, so.
Fun, I love that.
So I tried, I tried, right now, normally springtime and fall time are the times for, to take classes with them, they offer them all throughout the state. Obviously, last fall we were putting it in a bridge, so we didn't get, didn't get to go to any classes, but they probably will this up this spring. I've got a couple guys that are, um, way close to road scholar one, and I got one that's, the one that is a road scholar, one close to being a road scholar too.
And you still, and you said you still have that card of the group who potentially could do CDLs?
Yes.
Too, and you'll let us know if you want any help contacting them, what other ones you're on it? Thank you, Michael.
Is there any kind of like. Rural in dire need of help grants for paving projects that exist out there anywhere?
There were.
There were, I'm not sure if they're still there. Because actually, outside of the city of Leadville, Lake County is.
What's it called?
Disadvantaged.
Yeah.
So.
Well, the, the administration doesn't care.
Yeah, but you don't, we don't care about that.
Yeah, especially that.
They care about earth rate.
Right.
Well, you know, another angle that I've always thought about with Lake County, that I don't, I'm sure you guys have thought of it too, but I just wanna get it out there, because it's. It weighs on my mind a lot, is that. I feel like we're owed by the state, and even the nation to a degree, because of. Historically, you look at Lake County and how big it was, it was gigantic. And then, when they started chopping everything up and making a lot more counties, yeah, okay, here we go.
Yeah, evolution, yeah.
So, um, they, they made us tiny, because we had so much wealth here from all the silver that was being mined, and we built. National institutions, fortunes across the nations were, were made here. And they were like, you know, Leadville doesn't need all that land, they, they got all the money, you know? And then all of a sudden, it was like the Sherman Silver repeal happened, and we went from being like ballers to broke overnight. And that wasn't our fault, it was like they, the state drew the lines, that wasn't, you know, our decision, and.
That was the federal government that did the Sherman.
Yeah, so they, so there's an angle there, like, you guys, you know, you took all the money and ran and left us with, with. No land tax base, you know, we don't have any tax base here, we got the, the crappy end of the stick through no bolt of our own, can you throw us a bone, please? Like, I don't know if that, how you word that, how you kind of. Put, if you, that's an angle you can use in grant writing processes or not, but it seems like they, everyone owes us one.
Well, that was, that was kind of what the historical disadvantage designation was about, or is, you know, still exists, but. I mean, right now, and also the DOLA's EIAF, which I'm not gonna forget what that stands for, is. Energy and, energy impact something, something, um. Is specifically a Colorado thing for. Communities that are impacted by mining, like going away, or other, um, what?
Extraction.
Yes.
Yes.
But it's, I mean, it's energy related, so I think it, it, you know, we had a coal mine or something, and that would, and then we closed it. That's what that fund is, to try to like help transition workers and make, you know, like pay us back there. But again, like all, all of these things are in jeopardy right now, or may or may not.
Yeah.
Still be a thing, so, but yeah, they do. Still be a thing, so, but yeah, they do owe us.
Yeah. Well, maybe when the state's in better shape and we're not dealing with such turbulent stuff at the federal level, we can revisit that conversation, but just something that's always been in my head, like, man, they, they took all the wealth out of the ground and ran, or just left with not a lot to fix our roads and other stuff.
That, and, and, you know, the tabor laws, not being able to raise taxes.
Mm-hmm. We talk about our roads, like, we have to give plenty of money back every year because of tabor. And other states don't have tabor.
Maybe why you cross that, welcome the colorful Colorado sign and your ball joints are like, no.
They have money.
It's like the, the state, you know, is like way under budget or over budget, whatever.
Over.
Oh, yeah.
But they gotta give the money back because they collected too much tax.
Mm-hmm.
So it's like, it's.
It's cuckoo, cockapass.
In the best. Should we move to the twenty twenty-five pavement plans?
Yeah.
Is there documents that you had in the packet, there was stuff?
Yes.
There is.
That you wanted to.
A week, probably. It's really hard, cause the map's not posted on the website. That's all it is.
Okay. Nice.
You want to leave this, you want the mouse to?
Um, yeah. So basically, the color codes are blue, twenty-five, green, twenty-six, orange, twenty-seven. Summer of twenty-eight, and to be determined in the near future. So this summer of twenty-five, it's supposed to be this section of County Road four, or in much of it, as we can with the money that we have. Um, we're supposed to get a two-inch overlay. Probably following there, get a chip seal on it, protect it. And there's also one other little segment around Turquoise Lake, this falling apart really bad just because of the, um, water that's in the, in the area, and it's a really swampy area of road. Little bit of history about the road around Turquoise Lake, it was built by the federal government. When they built Turquoise Dam, they redid the road around the lake in the seventies. Um, so this asphalt's been there since seventy-five, seventy-six. Um, a lot of it's in really good condition, some of the areas have fallen apart, we've done some patching. We've had to replace culverts and vacuums out here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and at Busk because they were just rotten. And actually, pool of water paid for the culverts themselves at Busk Creek Crossing, and we put in the labor to put them in and asphalted over them, and it's actually.
That creek rips in the springtime, too.
Yeah, it does.
And then you guys did some work by the osprey nests near the rockslide area, right?
Um, yeah, we did some, some actual work along here where water was tearing up the road also, in winter time especially. Um, we got some drainage underneath of it to keep it from doing that. This section of the road right here is actually falling off the hillside.
Yeah, that's why.
Um, that's why we.
We can feel it.
Yeah, yeah, the car kind of.
Fingers are crossed.
I never know if you can see it or not, but you can kind of see this up here.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Oh, look at that.
That's what I'm like.
That's what's pushing off. Um, we did have a FEMA look at that, we did, when we had a bunch of rain, we had a lot of damage in that area.
Mm-hmm.
Um, very good, two thousand thirteen rains that we got. Um, FEMA paid to do an analysis of that area and possibly a fix for that. Their fix is to forget the roads there and put a bridge over that where it's sliding off. Um, so it is fixable, it would just have to be a bridge.
It's a bridge.
At that time, it was about one point two million dollars to put a bridge in there.
That was when?
Twenty thirteen.
Twenty thirteen.
Yeah.
So.
The apartment, they probably doubled that price at least. But then.
Five A.
Yeah, five A, the bridge, we, we finally doing that, and coming up, I have a PSA thing, I think on the next mission meeting, forgot that, cause we thought we had it taken care of, but I, I can't find a signed copy of it.
Michael, for County Road four, you know, there is, there is that potential development that'll be going in there on that road to the, on the far east side before Evergreen Drive. And I just, um, yep, right, to the right.
Are you going to the west of Evergreen?
Right there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the corner.
That will potentially get developed in the next, start getting developed in the next couple of years. I just want, I would hate for your beautiful paving to get ripped up for needing to go across and access utilities, so I just wanna, is that on your radar?
Yeah, and actually, the water line is on that side, and I also believe the sewer line's on that side, so I can check and make sure.
Okay.
They're also trying to do that little development on the other side of the road, though.
Yeah, they've got everything, that one's done.
That one's all done.
It's all paved and everything ready for housing.
Mountain fine, so.
Yeah, they've got some, few things to finish up, but they're, they're pretty much done. And I believe they have power on that side.
Well, there was something they needed to go across the road for, do you all remember what it was?
They gotta dig a ditch for like a mile or something, or a, a super long distance.
I think so.
Like for drainage?
Yeah, excellent, no, for, uh, transmission lines, three-phase power to that new development. I don't know how in-depth we can.
Just, just offering that like.
I'll talk to Hannah about that, cause I have a meeting with her on Thursday.
Love it, and then if you start on the west end and run out of, if you start to the west and then run out of money sooner, that feels like, um, you know, just offering, that that wouldn't be bad, and we could say like, that's planned. As opposed to starting too soon and then.
Yeah, it is soon where we, we finished paving.
Yeah.
Just start, start at the bottom and work uphill.
Yeah, especially be.
To avoid potential conflict.
I'd like to push uphill, with the laydown anyways, it just makes it easier.
Oh, my gosh, you don't need us.
Don't have to run the brakes on the truck, trying to keep it from running away from the lady that looks sweet.
You're fine.
Um, I'll take a look at that and I'll find out for sure.
Okay, thanks.
I do know that this is a high-pressure gas line.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
So that's, you know, within their reach.
Mm-hmm.
Right there.
Nick, is there any issue with Tabor Star, Jack Saunders' development down next to the rodeo grounds, essentially that area there? In terms of, cause I recall he was talking about something with the sewer line in the cemetery.
Yeah, cause the sewer line's up here.
Yeah.
It's uphill, so you would have to do, um, pump stations.
And sanitation, he wasn't thrilled about that.
Yeah.
Could they move in towards that?
Sorry.
Yeah, I'm not sure why he hasn't started, I know he's got some stuff obviously on county land.
Yeah, well, and he's also asking for, he'll be asking for something with that access too, but he, last time he talked about it, he said something about with the sewer that the, he was not happy with the church, cause they weren't letting him go through the cemetery, that, or the, the area that goes on the road to, to cut across one small little thing adjacent to his property in order to hook in.
Yeah.
And that's why it's creating issues, so I think there must be something there.
Actually, yeah, I think the sewer line might be on this side, so we may not wanna do anything with that section.
That's. Up there, that's what I was gonna say, up in that area into.
Because I think that, um, God Welch had to remove the sewer line in, on this side and then cross.
He did, yes.
Yeah.
Um, while we're looking at this, just, just, uh, north of what we're looking at there on Evergreen, that ninety-degree turn, is there any way we, like, how does that, is that just gonna stay that way forever, or can they round that out a little bit, or? The thing is.
It's just a matter of right away.
Rough shape.
It's rowdy, man.
It's just a matter of right of ways.
Okay.
And, so you know a lot of the problems with our county roads, and we don't have defined right of ways on them.
Oh, I did not know.
One section by County Road four, it was a railroad track into Leadville, it was actually the car in Midland. So we do have a right of way on that, I believe that one's eighty feet. County Road seventeen, Mountain View, was a DNR GW, we do have a hundred-foot right of way on that, unless the thing that choked down, you know, by some of the county giving up some of that. Which it is like right at the intersection by Safeway, it's really choked down there.
Michael, if you were, if the VSCC decided to give you funding for more staff and more funding for supplies to pave more roads, what would you do with it and what could you do with it this year?
I would expand on what we're getting. I guess the next section planned is just an extension of, we paved from here to here a couple years ago, cause that was, section was just falling apart, and, um, with the intent of going down County Road five, because it is bad. Um, it's a really rough road, even though the asphalt underneath is really good, it's just the cracking and, and it's, that's what happens with our weather. Summertime it gets hot, wintertime it gets cold, so it's, sanding contracts breaks up. So I'd move on to that.
And that's currently scheduled for twenty twenty-seven?
Twenty six.
Six, okay.
Twenty-seven is the green, which is County Road eleven.
Which is Stargazer out there?
Not all the way to Stargazer, but to where it turns and goes up and happening. Um, this road is actually paved but not paved, it's got crushed asphalt on it with recromine. And then with chips sealed on top of it, there's one section of it that looks really black after like ten years, like it was just laid yesterday. It's because they used the slag from down the string town to do that section. They couldn't get it to work in the machine, the laydown machine, I guess they were running it backwards not the correct way. They thought it was the material, not the chips, so that's what happened, can't get mine back or something.
Can I ask some, uh, generalized questions about the paving plan itself? Um, just because it's, I don't know, so it just seems to me like we're, we're at the point in the paving plans where we're paying attention to roads that are much less used than roads, from my observations, get a lot more traffic. And are we just at that point where they've been neglected so long that we can't put it off anymore, or is this like, is there any, it feels like we're paving everything out in the woods and, and not the stuff that, the main arteries that, you know, I mean, like, ha, what, was West Park under the city's responsibility, or is that?
No, it's been under the county's forever, and West Park has been overlaid several times, where now it needs to be taken back down, and sidewalks need to be put back in. According to the plat for West Park, the sidewalks, even though they're in the right of way for the county and they're along to the county, they're the responsibility of the homeowner. County's responsibility is the asphalt between the sidewalks.
Same with the city. Same with the city.
And then, Mountain View, I know it's had a lot of attention up higher, but down low, once you're getting, uh, down Four Seasons and past that, oh, that's on there, okay, is there any spots there, I feel like I'm gonna catch air sometimes. Um, with how it just, how it just gets my shocks going.
Yeah, so, Mountain View was paved all the way from, um, Highway twenty-four, um, all the way down to Silver Hill, because that's where most of the traffic is.
Yeah.
Right now, a lot of traffic even from Highway twenty-four is using, um, County Road five, ninety-nine and ninety-nine on to get to bypass Leadville.
So, so I guess.
Lot of traffic on those roads all the time, you know?
So I guess back, back to what I was trying to ask, is like, is there flexibility of like, you drive down a road, ninety, be like, you know what, this is not bad. Let's bump this further down the line, versus like, oh, the, the clock's ticking on this and we're supposed to do it, we're gonna do it. Do you ever make like those judgment calls?
Yeah, I do, if I can push it off, I, I, I do if I can use it someplace else.
Okay.
Um, like, after the August storms a year or two ago.
Yeah.
We, you can see, this one's got new pavement.
Yeah.
Because the floodwaters came across from the rail yard, and straight down across XL's yard, and lifted the asphalt up there two feet, and just completely took it off. So I, I had no choice except for to replace that asphalt.
Right.
Um, we did have to ask for supplemental budget to do that while we were paving that year, just to have enough money to do it. And it's not saying that we can't go and do a neighborhood street, um, but there's other things that we can do with most of them. Like, West Park, it's to the point where the asphalt's above the sidewalk and the curbs now.
There's too many layers.
Yeah, and it needs to come back down and, and be rebuilt from, from scratch.
It's like trying to strip paint off a two-hundred-year-old house.
Yeah, pretty much. And like that one that we just, that I just showed you, that is one of the ones that has never been done, so it didn't need it. And, I mean, it was time when the, the water picked it up off the ground, it was time to replace it.
Yeah.
There's, I think Mount Traverse between Mount Albert and, um, Mount Massive is another one that has never been paved, and I think Seventeenth in that same area has not been paved. But everything else in West Park has had at least one overlay on, if not two or three.
We cannot do any more overlays in West Park.
Uh, yeah, it, it needs to go back to native soil and be brought back up.
Wow.
Cause now we're getting above sidewalks and stuff.
What sidewalks?
Some places do have sidewalks out there, but they built them up to the level of the road, too. They come up a little bit in areas.
So we chose to do.
But yeah, I mean, that, that neighborhood was built in nineteen sixties. Um, that's when the sidewalks and everything went in first time.
So if we did that, would the residents need to be ready to redo their sidewalks?
I think so, or we would need to do a special district, I think that's the only way to go. I don't know, everybody in Lake County needs to pay for sidewalks in West Park.
What's a special district?
So it'd be like just people in that neighborhood where it serves their purpose to have these sidewalks, that they would pay the extra tax for that area.
Temporary tax?
Increases or property tax?
You can do that without it. How, how's that?
We'd have to take that to a vote, create a district and raise their levies a little bit to cover the, but I, I don't know if that, that'd be a tough conversation to have, I think, on multiple levels.
I do know that.
It's worth checking.
The Mountain View project, which only went to, um, the first time down to, the paving actually went all the way down to Silver Hill, but sidewalks and stuff only went to apartments, and Mount Massive, that project was three million dollars. And that pretty much wiped out Road Bridges' fund for a long time. Um, cause it all came out of Road Bridges' fund. And it was bid incorrectly, so it had to go out to bid again, so everybody bid it higher the second time, so it cost us more money than it was originally.
And then, yeah, the north side of Harrison Avenue is in pretty bad shape, too. Everything past the school and, but I don't know how you deal with those, cause they got those big concrete dips and, um, I don't know how that, how that looks in the future.
Some point, we gotta get that reground.
We were working on a huge collaboration with the city for a, a federal grant that's, a grant that's from the Infrastructure Bill, um, to address this, to address,
To do, go on it, right?
Um, it's aimed at, you know, natural disasters and making our transit systems more. It's aimed at, you know, natural disasters and making our transit systems more resilient to like flooding. Um so this was a really good fit of a project that they just proposed that whole thing, so. Luckily, it isn't gonna happen, but.
So I don't know if you can picture it, but basically, West Park, Mount Massive has become the storm sewer for Lake County.
Yeah.
All of the water from the rail yard and above it basically goes right down to Mount Massive. Um and then runs down Mount Massive and goes to the drainage on County Road four. There's some that runs down Mountain View Drive, but it all basically collects on County Road four.
Could you zoom out just a little bit and kind of sh- show us on the screen sort of where it all does drain?
So basically, all of this area up here.
Yeah.
Drains to the crossing across the highway.
Yeah.
It does go into a pipe, but during the rainstorm, it didn't stay in the pipe. To go to Mountain View Drive and then Mountain View Drive, which is flows out into this area. Or out into these houses. Twelve Street and all of the teen streets, stuff that comes across there. Just goes down seventeenth or Traverse, it's Mount or Mount Massive, it goes south on Mount Massive. Down here in the. But big storm we had in that August actually hit this intersection and. Filled up the culvert and ran over and ran down and got a bunch of houses and driveways in this area.
So that flood of twenty three started in town and ended up all the way down by Mountain Mines and Alpine Drive.
I mean, all the new construction, it basically wiped out. These intersections overflowed, got back in the road and they got to County Road nine. And overflowed that culvert and spewed over into Mountain Mines.
You think that water is a public health hazard?
Um it could be because it just goes through over a lot of territory before it gets too out of town.
Safety hazard, it goes like it goes right down well. Bloods West Park.
I just I witnessed children playing in those runoff streams and sometimes I wonder about all the. Broken down cars and backyards leaking all manners of chemicals onto the surface there and wonder just kind of what's in the. What's in that water those kids are playing in.
The huge grave.
Cauldrons floating down.
They're in boxes.
That smoke did do a lot of damage to one of these graves there too.
That's a scary thought too, cause there's a lot of shallow graves back there. Rotten historic pine boxes that are starting to stick out. What do you think is more dire of the need right now, figuring out drainage or fixing?
I think before we do fix any roads, other than to patch them in West Park, we need to get the drainage figured out. Because if it has to go underground, we're gonna tear up the roads anyways and maybe we can include that in the ground.
So maybe we should have more of a drainage conversation before we have a paving conversation?
I think so.
I mean, that has been part of the discussions about developing. Harrison Ball Field. Harrison Ball Field over there is trying to figure out how that project can pay for some of these stormwater solutions. So we're creating a a pond, I don't know the words that I'd use.
Because even the school district. With the new school, new school floods, they are supposed to keep any additional water on site. And they don't, it's berm and it runs right down Twelve Street through here to Mount Massive, so it adds to the problem too. Supposedly, and I'm not sure how, it finally got approved, I'm not sure what direction they went, but they didn't want. Water sitting on the school property where a child could get in and down. And I have, for a while, I know when they built it, they did have a big pond, collecting pond over here, but I don't know.
They have a big drain in the middle of that.
Yeah, they have it.
So the school could be looked at as a situation where they initially planned to. Have all the drainage issues taken care of and the reality is not. Not that. So drain.
Is the drainage worse with the school there?
Um yeah, because when um all winter long when it's melting, it runs out on twelve Street. And right down to Mount Albert and it freezes that intersection.
But how is it worse because the school is built?
Cause there's less.
Because it it never left the site before.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Now it.
And now they're being sight.
Goes right out onto Twelve Street and down.
Well, they do all their snow storage right there.
Yeah, and that's where they push all their snow to, that's why it melts forever.
Yeah. I think when we were talking to S- SE Group, um the Harrison, they were talking about retention pond or whatnot. Yeah.
So the county already has, because I know who put it in. You can kind of see this bermless right there.
Yep.
That is about a twelve foot deep um French drain. Because the water was coming through here and flooding all of these houses. And since it was on county property that was coming from, that was our option to fix it and since we put that in, it's worked wonders. And it's not flooded any of those houses or out into that area, so it it basically an underground, it it comes to a berm. And then soaks into the rocks underground and then goes, you know, dissipates into, or is supposed to go back into the ground. A drain gets all the oil from those leaking out of those line of cars that are there. Right away around county property.
That project's drain doesn't daylight anywhere, it just uh.
No, it just, it goes there and it and I never had water build up on top of it, it just go back into the soil.
French drains like a pile of rocks with a lot of dirt on top of it. Or filled with rocks here.
So you can kind of see where it was all dug up, that's about how much of the rock stuff goes.
Look at those cars.
And that stuff, like I lose sleep over that stuff, thinking about all the toxic junk leaking out, everyone's broken down cars.
That's Marcellina's house.
That's what I was just gonna ask.
Got a junkyard there.
We'll have to see if there are reinforcements on that.
Yeah, it was probably about. Cause there was a bunch of stuff piled out here that did finally get moved. I was gonna go get my firewood, cause it was all piled out here and one of them.
So it's fair game.
Yeah, it's on county property, I'm gonna go. Yes.
Just a, just an observation, um you know, I lo- I love the, you know, the talking about what should come first and, you know. Drainage might ruin the road, you know, if it's not taken care of first. The other thing is just talking about County Road four, you know, I know there's been some conversations about. You know, about a a path, you know, down there, there's safety concerns, a lot of people walk on on County Road four. I think Jane Schaefer had a, you know, a grant proposal in to, you know, to do something with trails. On County Road four, yeah, I guess my observation is that once you, once you repave County Road four. You know, the speeds are gonna increase, it's gonna be more of a of a safety hazard to people walking on the roads. And unless there's some, you know, it just seems like there should be a grand plan, you know, before you pave. County Road four and increase the speeds, people are gonna be, uh just my observations from County Road ninety nine after the overlay. You know, the speeds there are now insane because the road is smooth.
Yeah, totally.
And you know, you don't, you don't bounce around on it, and so there are unintended consequences for doing, you know, for doing good works. And unless there's better, you know, enforcement by the sheriff for for speeding, um it's gonna happen. On County Road ninety nine, it's double striped, like Michael said, as most roads are, but that doesn't mean that, you know, the. More excessive speeders pass speeders, you know, across the double line, so so I guess my point is that, you know, look at. Look at things a little bit holistically and realize what the unintended consequences are and whether. And how those might mitigate whether you really wanna do the the improvement. I'd love to see better roads, but I also recognize that, you know, they create their own hazards.
Yeah, I can't even pull out of my road because they're blind to turn on Mountain View, people drive so fast past there that I'm gonna get. Yeah, you know what it's like, it's.
It's dangerous.
I like how, yeah, like what's gonna happen like when my kid starts driving and has to learn how to pull out of that intersection. It's like, you need to look through the trees way down there before you pull up like this.
Or like coming for a little distance or whatever.
So I think the enforcement aspect of that is, I don't know how we.
Talk to the sheriff's office about the potential options for speed calming, you know, for there.
But it's so, it's so, it's such a fair point, that like poor roads are natural.
Speeding.
Traffic calming devices and traffic calming devices are very expensive. Like to put in a speed bump, to like put in any flashing pedestrian signs.
Enforcement.
Uh yeah, but enforcement, yeah, enforcement is also expensive. Um but it's a really wonderful point, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
County Road four, you get a lot of that, a lot of traffic going to Sugarloaf and.
Uh huh, and turquoise.
Oh yeah, cause.
I I think those school grad like me, I can't remember before.
Oh yeah.
It'll get worse though.
This crossing is due to be. Are you actually not that one? This one. It's due to be replaced also.
On the other hand, it's also so damaging to your.
Oh, and believe me, I spent forty five minutes on phones.
Get it and make people sit down, but at the same time.
Don't set the ones that can't run down there. Cause that's where he tells everybody to go to his campground. Yeah, and going around three hundred is an inconvenience.
That's a pretty big detour. There's no room for a trail on Lower Four.
Uh no, basically, there's a trail that goes to. This side of Baby Dough, it goes right in here someplace, but there is not a connection to anywhere else. I know that the Trails Committee was talking about doing the trail back this way to County Road nine. And make the trail go down County Road nine.
Get to do on the other side of, on County Road four.
Yeah. It's just cause it gets, County Road four gets really narrow along here and.
And it's like.
It's a steep slope off of that.
It drops off, yeah.
Well, and when it's down in that valley, in the pines, it just, the snow never melts off. You don't get access to that trail for very long.
And I don't know if you know it or not, but this area right here is county park.
I didn't know that.
I think that's why we're doing the fire mitigation work in up here in last.
Opening it up a little bit.
Do you know the timeline for the one you think it'll be completed?
Hopefully this summer.
Okay.
But if we're, if we're gonna take that section out, where they're gonna have to do crossings to get to that subdivision. That section will be off.
I'm just thinking of some permits we have for some braces that go down four this year.
So the plan is. The plan is gonna be really right in the way of all of that.
What's that?
It would be right in the way of all of that.
Good to know, that was really good to know when we were talking about them.
The plan, plan for paving is from mid-June to, I gotta be done before August.
Before August.
Oh, fine.
Because then I have to be working on a bridge, County Road five eight by the middle of August.
Michael, one thing I don't see on here, which I'd love to see is Mount Massive Drive. That's a major thoroughfare and it is thrashed.
On Mount Massive? You you sure about that?
One, worse though the one side, like after Mount Massive.
Massive's fairly recently paved, McWeffy is thrashed. No, not Mount Massive, I'm sorry.
Mount Albert.
What is that, is it nineteen right there or seventeenth? To get off Mountain View Drive and then on to Sawatch and Evergreen? Oh, over by uh Sandoval's House on the corner there. Exactly, which street is that?
It's Mount Wilson.
On Wilson, Mount Evans.
Mount Lincoln, Mount Lincoln. Mount Lincoln, Mount Lincoln is thrashed.
So it is. This Mount Lincoln or this one, cause the county doesn't own this one.
The one.
No, it's the first.
The first one.
Lincoln.
Cause that's how people are getting from Summit to Evergreen Drive, that's a major thoroughfare.
Yeah, that is like kind of a cut through.
It is thrashed, all those roads are trashed. There's not a good option.
Lodestone is thrashed too.
Lodestone is thrashed, I told voters, if I had a sway and uh. Getting stuff paved, I'd pave everything except for my street because it would just look bad. I'm sure, I'm sure your neighbors appreciate that. I told them all. Vote for me, I won't pave your street, I will pave our neighborhood, but not our, not my road. Sorry.
Our road isn't too bad.
That neighborhood has gotten a lot of paving.
It's Lodestone where you first.
Lodestone has?
No, not Lodestone, I mean, we did pave a part of it, cause it was falling apart really bad, we patched it.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Copper, silver.
Gold, yeah, there's new ones, silver and uh the the, what's in between silver and diamond street, whatever, that's all new, the.
Dance side. Yeah, copper, gold, silver drive was done and this part of Golden Drive all the way around.
The Lodestone itself is, gives your, uh feels like you got a a base speaker in your trunk.
I think this this part of Diamond.
Yeah, like right in front of Wadsworth's house, like right when you turn off.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's where we did that patch, cause we had extra asphalt.
It's coming off now.
So it happens when you gotta plow roads and.
You're right.
And it's really when spring, fall and spring are the worst times to to plow roads, cause the dirt is still soft underneath. And you can dig into asphalt really easily and it just tears up a lot of stuff. So dirt roads get graders to plow them once it starts falling out, cause otherwise everything will be in the ditch.
It's hard, it's hard.
Yeah, I mean, as much as I'd like to see that neighborhood get some attention, every time I drive through West Park, I'm like, oh gosh, yeah, this guy's needed.
So I know Quithy needs some, it got one lane paved by um sanitation, when they replaced the sanitation line all the way to fifteenth street.
Okay.
The other half of it belongs to the city, cause it's actually all in the city. City limits right there.
Like the the mineral belt sort of, or no, okay.
That black line.
Oh, huh, okay. That section that the city owns there is pretty rough on the Gruddy. That intersection too, that's just a triangle.
Yeah, that's where it is. Always had been. Maybe the city can, they can help, the city paid that. I don't know, that that's also why we did over here, cause I asked the city if they wanted this section of the with he paved. And they said no. That's like, so we started at at the county line and.
That five, that five point intersection is silly.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
So is that.
There's open air.
The microtopography there is pretty wild.
Well, I guess uh further conversations with your counterpart on the city side. Probably good thing then we'll we'll, I guess maybe we need a. Dig a deep dive into the drainage stuff.
I think that would be our our best bet to start with first, to get the the drainage handled. I mean, even the city of Leadville has to look at the drainage, cause there's goes to basically two places also. And go, most of it flows across town either to Starditch over here or Oro Ditch down here, which goes out to the highway. But there's pretty deep ditches. It's all on the surface, it was never put underground, except for like under the highway and stuff, but there's some underground stuff. Everything is surface drainage. Now we're paid for it.
Yeah.
I know because even people that are in these areas, they have drainage coming down Mountain View. Was never a problem before, but now it's in their backyards. And they're noticing an increase of the water like up to Diamond Street there. The what?
The burner?
Yeah, we should, wait, you find that? Yeah, we should, wait, find that.
Okay.
Do that one now. Do the late county invoice first, and then we'll do the next two CDPAG ones above that. So. We got. An invoice for the APEN for the air burner finally. And a shocking amount of fourteen thousand dollars.
For the permit.
Um that's to use that air burner at the landfill.
Oh, that's right, the you needed the generator for the.
Yeah, we're looking at at adding the generator to that.
Okay.
Feature. Um usually the APEN fee is what we usually have to pay. Um. I'm not sure why it lasted fourteen thousand dollars, breakdown, and I think you can go up to on the next page.
Is this this kid in Colorado?
Yes, Department of Health. So this here, I'm not sure what this is. Ninety hours of of an outsider doing something? Um is it crazy? By law, and I copy the law in here also, um. If they're gonna go over thirty hours on anything, they got two hundred and forty, well, that's a payment. But if they go over thirty hours on anything, they need to notify us that they're gonna go over thirty hours and what it'll cost. I did not get noticed that they're gonna do that, and I don't believe anybody else in the county that one.
And this was something CDPAG did that is.
Yeah, so you know, they gave us a permit, and there was not a fee like that with it. To begin with, I got the actual permit for the first one, and I did notice this one is for a construction permit. And the other one was for the air curtain destructor by itself. And so I'm not sure what that is. Basically, I'm writing to you guys, so maybe you can approach. CDPAG, somebody hire in CDA CDPAG to find out why this is. We do need to write a letter pretty quick. So that they won't enforce this invoice until we get some answers back. Um and that's one of the reasons I brought it down here. I do have money in the in our professional services budget, but not this kind of money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's it's for other things and not. I mean, and air pollution.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Even if they stick to twenty-nine point nine nine hours, we'd still knock that ten thousand dollars down to thirty thirty-three hundred or something.
What do you mean that going over thirty hours? Who didn't tell you?
If. But and and we can go to to one of the other ones.
Okay.
How are we gonna write the letter?
Somebody need to curse this out on that.
Like direct stuff, yeah, something for you.
To um the processing fee first.
And then we can set up a meeting with CDPAG, if you wanna.
Okay.
Try and mature.
There's a processing fee.
Do we know what's they says in statute that they're not allowed to bill us for anything over thirty hours?
Yeah.
That's what we're.
Oh, okay.
Oh, they're not allowed to bill us over thirty hours.
Without notifying us.
Sorry.
So the bottom line down there, by law, we must notify you in writing, and total processing time issue plus final is anticipated to exceed thirty hours. Not saying that we don't have to pay them if it does, but they have to notify us so that we can give them approval to.
And I'm presuming we did not choose to waive that notice requirement.
And we did not. We did not, cause I was never notified that it was gonna go over ninety hours. And maybe they didn't know because it's an outsider and I'm not, like I said, I'm not sure what that outsider is, because our engineers did all the work for them.
Are they the ones burning or are we? I don't understand.
We're the ones that wanna use the air curtain burner at the landfill to burn slash.
Right.
Yeah.
So I don't understand, how would they and tell you that it's going to be more than thirty hours? Wouldn't you tell them?
If someone researching the the impacts of the impacts of us burning, like air quality, things of that nature.
The amount. Yeah.
Tell our Department of Health, paid someone for ninety hours of research time or whatever processing and to.
Oh.
Yeah, so every time that we contacted them, they put time onto this.
Come up with.
Oh, thank you, sorry. Got it, got it, got it.
Um I'm just not sure what that ninety hour is for, so I would I would ask them for a breakdown of that ninety hours.
This is.
Right. Yeah.
Specifically because that's ten thousand dollars of the bill.
And we didn't waive the notice and they didn't tell us that it was gonna take more than thirty hours.
Um.
No, is there a chance that at a state level, they've maybe told departments to collect as much in fees as possible?
Got it.
To help offset some of the state's issues? Am I allowed to make that assumption?
Of course you can, yes.
But. I was gonna make an assumption too, but I didn't know if it really wanted to go there. But because the the ex-commissioners brought this up to a higher level, because we were three years without getting a permit. We actually got a permit within six months the first time, but it said I couldn't use it at the landfill. And that's where it's even on their permit, that's where it's housed at to be used. And it's like, because we have a Title Five at the landfill, we have another, and it's an industrial site, they said we couldn't use it there. So we asked those questions and that's where we're at today.
Oh, Lord.
So I don't know if it's because we went above. People in the air pollution controls division, we brought it to, I think, Kevin or her name.
Their executive director, uh who used to be, I think, a commissioner in Eagle.
Right.
Yeah, Joel.
Yeah, I think so. But we brought it elevated it, so and it still took three years to get it. Cause we just got this the other day.
Okay.
Wow. It's called June.
Okay.
The other the other thing is just the appeals process for we same, we have to write a letter within thirty days, so that they don't enforce the. Another thing like the invoice.
The invoice, yeah.
Lower.
Yeah.
And then the grant.
So at the end of last year, we applied for a dollar grant to do basically a planning grant or to investigate what we would need for a new building. Um area, it's not, it was like a fifty thousand dollar grant. That we had to share twenty-five fifty percent of, right? So it's fifty fifty grand to totaled with our share, and at that time I did have the money. But obviously since we're in a new budget, it's not there no more. Um but it was just to start the planning process for a new building and so that we could get. The area we're at open to housing, or if needed, because it's all are already in the city and in.
Yeah, yeah.
Um. Close into the city.
And that those the current facilities are.
Are outdated and.
Mm-hmm.
Wait, where are we talking about right now?
Public Works currently is in the city.
Oh.
The actual Public Works facilities and where we keep all of the vehicles and all the vehicles.
Planning to move them up near the airport instead.
Okay.
So this would allow us to do some planning.
So it's actually right behind.
And theoretically.
Stringtown and and right adjacent to our arcade out there.
Hmm.
Okay.
It's like theoretically build a whole new facility that is adequate and is it frees up that space for for housing. And could also accommodate and be some some other departments in office spaces, cause we also have this issue where we don't have.
Other departments.
Really adequate facilities for. Uh all of our departments.
Yeah.
Right.
So Michael, you're saying that we did apply for the grant last year?
Yeah.
So the grant was approved through the grant approval process.
Right.
And then I'm assuming that the match was approved if the grant was approved through the grant approval process.
Yeah, it was.
But now you're saying that the grant match is no longer in your twenty twenty-five budget, and why is it no longer in your twenty twenty-five budget?
Was it? Right. Cause it wasn't carried over from twenty-four, it was in the twenty-four, it had extra funds in the twenty-four budget.
Okay.
Like in in um professional services that I hadn't used.
Mm-hmm.
Um that we could have used for this, but it didn't get carried over.
So does that refer it back to the.
Why not? I guess it's still.
It just stays in stays in the road and bridge fund.
I think also why we're asking you is because countywide, we've done a ninety-day moratorium on grants, given the.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, uh new landscape that we're working under, and so there's certain grants that we're just saying no to to staff. There's certain grants that we're saying, let's see what the PCC says, this is one of them.
Right.
It's a twenty-five thousand dollar match. It's planning for a much larger project that would cost a lot more money for the county.
Yeah.
We're asking if you would like us to proceed with moving forward with this grant. With a twenty-five thousand dollar batch to do this planning, to eventually move. His department up to a different more appropriate location.
And this is a step in the right direction for long-term planning for road and bridge.
Yes.
Um down the road, and it's only twenty-five thousand and it's been matched. We still have access to that match.
Yes, they haven't accepted the grant yet, but yeah, it was just recently given to us.
Yeah, there's a bunch of grants that were like applied for before various things happened and then. You know, maybe or we were bound to apply or.
Mm-hmm.
Could we put a discussion or a uh vote on that on the next work session or regular meeting?
I don't think we have to vote on it, right? Cause it's operational.
I mean, it's it's, yeah, I mean, I think we just want direction from.
Well, like, are you comfortable with us moving forward?
I I'd say let that one rather like. I I uh there's I'm just one of three voices.
I think the plan was to discuss it here and then it put it on the the agenda. I think it's actually on the agenda for the board for the next regular meeting.
There's a few other grants that were are on that. We just wanted you to talk about it right now.
Okay.
Cause Michael's here.
Public Works.
Cool.
Yeah, yeah.
Have you had any specific questions?
So also it wasn't at the CCI meeting, but at the meeting before, I talked to um an architect that basically used to run C L T A.
Mm-hmm.
Um she did, we just discussed it, so that's where we got going down this track and, you know, first finding out what we need, if it's feasible. Um to even go down that route. Um previous commissioners also thought about having employee housing attached to it somehow, like some mechanic done on their buildings. Um which is a really nice house for me. I have a wonderful house as it is. Um but you know, just to create more more employee housing and stuff as part of that facility. And not knowing what other, you know, offices could go in there, like CPD maybe, recreation maybe.
This is at the bottom of the airport road, right? Not up at.
No, it's actually more towards CMC, cause there's a county road that goes off right next to the bike path there at the north end of Stringtown.
Oh.
It's County Road Forty-five, it's just a little dirt trail.
Yeah, it goes up towards dump.
Yeah, um actually it goes up towards um the.
It goes up towards like a motorbike, but.
There's a.
Up towards the motocross track, but not that far up.
Turns like archery ranch.
So here's the gravel pit. So it would be either in this area.
Right behind Stringtown.
Yeah. There's a a pretty good buffer trees and everything. Um county owns this whole section, it doesn't show it, but we do it on this whole fifty-six acres there.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Um about half of it is for the pit.
Where would all twenty-four, where's the access internet of that?
But. So it could be off of this one, which is County Road Forty-five.
Okay.
Or it could come from the pit this way, that way.
Pit's completely not op operational at this point, it's just kinda there.
Um we use it for all of our road base.
Oh.
Sometime we do make road base there. Um.
What's the lifespan on that?
Um I don't have an actual gear, because I don't know, depending on how much we make out of there, but it it's. Got a pretty good buried source of material. Um we've really touched the surface out there. Now, one commissioner tried to to lease it to um. An outsider, um which would they would have probably cleaned it out in within ten years, to what they want to haul out of there.
We got too many dirt roads to give that up, that's the source of our good.
Basically with this pit and the Hapman pit, the county is is self-sustainable or could be self-sustainable.
Mm-hmm.
And that that's one of the things I focus on is to keep stuff in the county, so that we don't have to go purchase stuff out of the county.
Mm-hmm.
Um especially stuff, you know, like making asphalt for our roads and making road base for our roads.
Mm-hmm.
But there's three-phase power at the pit, so it would be hard to bring it over the hill. Um there's a sewer line right behind or right by the highway in um. Stringtown and that's the water line to the airport, so the water line goes across that property.
Wow. Where's the sewer?
Makes sense.
Across the street?
The sewer the sewer line is right on this side of down here in Stringtown, so it crosses in front of the houses in Stringtown. Actually, it might be behind him right in that area.
So so this next step is just an approval for the planning of what that would look like out there.
Yeah, to get some to make it make some direction to what we need, what we you know, what the next step is.
Mm-hmm.
Um to see what other offices need if they move out there, you know, to make sure that facility meets their needs also.
Mm-hmm.
Would that include any um planning for what our options would be with the existing road and bridge, like what we could do with that? To maybe recoup some costs of this.
Um yeah, because once if we when we move out of there, it can be sold for housing.
Right.
Because it's already subdivided for that.
Mm-hmm.
Um it's got all the obviously hookups, so that with that part of the city is expanding with all with all the new housing.
So once we demoed existing road and bridge, I mean, that's just way down the road, but we that is already parcel up and it's like legal for us to sell those as individual lots to anyone?
Can you show us on the map of your county facilities up there at the Dufftown? And how much how much property it is roughly?
So the county owns this kind of word section down here, but this is still.
Wow.
Part of the county. Um those are the solar panels that operate, supply very good power. They actually feed it back into the system, but um so all the all of our buildings will run off of that solar team.
Mm-hmm.
All sets.
This is the main shop. Um this is our south shop, this is basically equipment storage. Like in the winter time, we bring all the equipment in to keep it warm and keep it thawed out, melted out after we're plowing and stuff. Summertime, that's just used to store materials in pretty much. Um this east east barn is where we keep our water truck. It's not that big of a place, it's got some storage in there. But it's a heated shop to keep the water truck in, so it doesn't freeze and we keep the water um water in it all year long to help the fire station. Um with anything in the county. This is our office. Um the yard is ours and this is um I don't know, just all downtown.
And then the maintenance shop next to Sixth Street, would you also vacate that?
Yes. Which is this building.
Mm-hmm.
Used to be the old swimming pool, I live in the swimming pool.
That's ours.
I always thought that was the city's. You know, that and the Sixth Street again, well, yeah.
I'm a fan of a plan. I think that having a plan will help us understand how we have to chip away at this need.
We could, I mean, it's pretty far out, but we could always get.
Yeah, this is just like this first stepping sound of of something, you know?
I think so too. I think, yeah, sorry, I don't mean to laugh.
You can laugh.
Yeah.
What's wrong with that?
I'm not gonna share the joke, it's in my head, but.
Yeah, I think uh. Yeah, I wanna know.
Yeah, it was.
Did it hurt?
Matt, the feasibility study. You're voting for a feasibility study?
Not at the session you're.
But but. No.
I can send you the grant proposal, which was really just, I mean, it takes the form of a letter from from Jeff that um. He sent it. Um. And it it breaks down like what we're asking for and why. And I could also, if you want, that Michael got that um sort of rough proposal from his.
Yeah, I can forward that to you.
Um that just sort of breaks down the the cost of what, you know.
Architects obviously would have to go out to.
We're gonna do preliminary design and. We're gonna do preliminary design and, you know, work charrettes and.
Love a good charrette.
I love a good charrette. It's in there, if you want more info, but I think like, don't we need to have official vote on this?
Yeah, that's, this is, that's why the soul need to be on. Community agenda is right.
Um, but I can send you that if you're interested. Um, to look at it beforehand, but I mean, it already seems pretty good to go already, but.
Yeah, but put it in the packet for sure.
For, okay. Okay.
Yeah, just send it to me.
I will send it to you immediately. Both those things, but.
How much repair do those shops need up there to get through the next twenty years?
Both of the roofs on these, on these buildings have been replaced, and they're starting to leak again.
No.
Both of the roofs have been replaced?
How recently?
Within the last fifteen years, so they're, I mean, this one was the last one, it was done probably ten years, less than ten years ago.
Are they flat roofs?
Um, no, they're, they don't have much of a peak though. And they're, they're both not all, actually all three of them are metal buildings. And our offices are modular.
And it has a heat.
And it has no heat.
What heater?
Yeah, it's had electric burns in it, and they haven't been able to get parts for it, so.
The offices don't have heat?
No.
What?
I have a a small heater in my office.
But there's heat in storage right next to you. Yes, just.
Yeah, I just have the heater in there replaced, and that's also um. Where the corner stuff is stored.
Oh, right. What kind of electric?
So I turned the heat off in there, we won't go there.
Michael, what kind of electric heater does that?
It's got a forced air electric heater. And so and I've had a couple people looking for parts for it. The air conditioner works really good in the summertime, it just doesn't heat in the wintertime.
Oh, good. Okay.
Let's look up a many.
It's got a really weird. Section for a heat condenser and a heat element in there.
Why'd you guys go with electric?
Um, because. There was a question that we'd go as green as we could with that building.
I would.
I have a gas line right in the alley out there, like fifteen feet away that I could have run to that area, but they wouldn't want to see it.
Well, it means sometimes real cold. Road ruins, paved with good tints.
The county does, these are our storage, this leads to our finances. So the county does own that section too.
Well.
I bet those ones would love to have.
I I know there's a hesitation for studies. But like the idea of focusing on roads and infrastructure and the improvements there. The foundation of that is, we're looking at it. And if this is falling apart. I don't see how we're going to be very efficient at fixing roads and infrastructure if we don't. Look at the big picture and wonder how public works, road and bridge, maintenance, everything is operating for the next twenty years.
Well, it sounds like a big bill, sounds like a other twenty million dollar project.
Uh, it's possible, but like, a lot of that property could pay for maybe. Um, I'm also looking for grants. And. LTAP maybe helping me with that, but they helped the city of Buffalo build a facility. Of all grant funds.
What's LTAP?
That local training.
Local technical. There were, I think, a lot of federal grants for public works facilities.
For public works facilities.
So don't forget the public dollars, like the dollars.
Specifically for public works, it wasn't for like courthouses or stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
That was specifically for public works facilities.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff that's also in that infrastructure build.
Yeah.
That that bipartisan infrastructure build.
Yeah.
Bipartisan.
I remember it.
It's a good word.
So, if, you know, if. That ever gets unfrozen and. Those programs exist. And we have a planning study ready to go, then we have a really good shot at.
That's another problem with road and branch or public works. We've tried to get mining stuff like for drainage. And we didn't get a grant for that, then we applied for last year. We don't have anything like a plan on the table to. Take the seat out and say, hey, can you help us with this?
Yeah. It makes us competitive.
It does.
Like people don't want to give you money.
Plan, we don't have a plan on the shelf to say, hey.
Yeah.
We can move this forward.
It's kind of shuffle and.
Yeah, totally.
Okay, like that.
So.
Yes, I hate planning that, dude.
I appreciate planning grants because for this reason, that we're not just like, you know, dealing with deferred maintenance as it explodes. Like we can see it coming down the pike, and we can like. Try to put money aside or try to create a plan so that when it does explode, at least we're not caught off guard and tossing money at it. That's, I mean, like, of course we need to plan for these things. It's not, I don't, I feel like it's not. Like fiduciary of us to not plan for these things with our taxpayers' dollars.
So what do you get for the fifty Gs? You get a a site plan and a? And you just.
Yeah, they won't go as far as to designing anything, but they will have, you know, something to say, you know, this is what you need.
Yeah. Size.
This is what each department, you know, what they, to meet their their needs would need to meet in that domain. They would do interviews with everybody to find out what, you know, what their needs are, what they have now, what what more do they need?
Yeah, we had it broken down in the proposal as an adjacency diagram, which is like visual overview, the charrette. So they're just reversible expenses and then a whole preliminary design.
What's a charrette?
Thank you, Andy.
It's like a work session.
It's a what?
Like work session for design, for architectural designs and stuff, so.
A charrette.
Kicking it around.
Okay.
It's an absolute word.
Design work session.
I like saying it, charrette.
Yeah, sophisticated.
It sounds like a pastry.
I was gonna say, it sounds like a charcuterie board or something, is it?
Really expensive pastry.
Is there, you actually get to sit down and talk, like you look at the site? And then you talk about what would fit, what would fit there, yeah.
Yeah, this, this is like a figure.
How you do.
No, I can't write, you have to draw your own maps, that's the word.
I think like the point is that it's like, it's not just like one guy's idea, it's, it's.
So I was, I was doing that for years and didn't even know.
You were, you have been doing design charrette your entire professional career, friend.
Just to just call them design meetings.
Yeah.
So we'll put this on the agenda for a formal vote, but we wanted you to discuss it with Michael.
Cool.
Yeah, awesome, so.
And then all those other grant discussions will be in our packet, are they in there yet?
Uh, no, not yet, not yet, but.
They're not in there yet.
On what other?
We have more dis- more discussion surrounding up grants in various states.
For the, all the grants that are kind of in in lobo, between like, like maybe we haven't accepted them yet, or we have a, an uh, an application out there, we don't know yet, or.
Oh, everything that's affected by the freeze, county freeze.
Yeah. No, so there's a few grants that Tim and I and Candace, our funding director, just said, no. It's like funding FTE, hundreds of thousands of dollars, they were high risk from a federal state level, that we just said, no.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, there's some though that are like from private foundations or are things that we are statutorily required to do that are lower found, like lower amounts. That we are gonna put before you just to check that you feel comfortable from a fiscal perspective, but that's moving forward, given where we're at right now.
Okay.
Can we see the ones where you guys decided you didn't want to pursue the job?
Sure.
What's FTE?
Fulton, Cleveland.
Thank you, I've asked that before.
Yeah, you can certainly do that, um. Thank you. You guys need the room? Thank you.
Alright.
Llamas.
What's that?
Llamas.
Oh, that's it?
That's it.
Okay. It's eleven o'clock AM, we are going to close this morning work session of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners, February twenty fifth, thousand twenty five.